Okay, go ahead.
All the technologies on? Okay, I would like to call the September 2020 meeting of the Niskiuna zoning board of appeals to order. If we could please call the roll.
Mr. Frary?
Present.
Mr. Latif?
Here.
Ms. McGinnis?
Here.
Ms. Pacheco?
Here.
Mr. Green?
Here.
Mr. Hope?
Here.
Chairman Goodman?
Here.
The first order of business would be the minutes from the last meeting?
You will have those for your next meeting.
I was just saying, gonna say, I don't think I have them.
Yeah, you don't have them. Sorry about that.
I would ask if we could please call the first case then.
The appeal of Chrissy Ann Roman for a variance from section 220-18B3B and section 220-13 Schedule IC of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskiuna as it applies to the property at 1255 Van Antwerp Road, Niskiuna, New York, located in the R2 medium density residential zoning district for a fourth accessory structure and to construct an 18-foot diameter pool within designated side yard setbacks. Sections 220-18B2 states that there shall not be more than three accessory structures on a lot. There are currently two accessory structures on the property, a garage and a fence. As proposed, the pool and the pool deck represent the third and fourth accessory structure. Therefore, a variance for one additional accessory structure is required. Section 220-18B3B states that the required side and rear yard dimensions for major accessory structures shall be the same as applies to the principal building. As defined, the major accessory structures are detached accessory buildings or other structures in excess of 120 square feet. The pool at 254 square feet is a major accessory structure. Section 220-13 Schedule IC establishes a side setback minimum of 15 feet. As proposed, the pool will be located 11 feet from one side property line and 10 feet from the other side property line. Therefore, both a four-foot four-foot side yard setback variance and a five-foot side yard setback variance are required. Fifteen notices were mailed, zero responses.
Okay, and Ms. Robertson, were you gonna recap from last meeting?
Yeah, so at the last meeting, there was a question about if the deck was considered an accessory structure or attached to the pool, and if it was attached to the pool, the deck was closer to the lot line than the pool. And so we felt like that distance needed to be cited. And if the deck wasn't attached to the pool, Mr. Frary correctly pointed out that that would be four accessory structures. So we talked to the building department, and I was incorrect when I said that the deck and the pool are considered a single accessory structure. They're considered separate. So the deck is a minor accessory structure and therefore doesn't need the citation to the lot line, but there are four accessory structures. So the denial changed from when you guys thought at the last meeting it was only the distances for the pool. And this meeting, it's citing the distances for the pool, which haven't changed. Everything in the application has stayed the same. We just got clarification on what needed a variance. So the distances of the pool are the same. They still need a variance. And the deck is included as the fourth accessory structure. So there's a fence, a garage, a shed, or sorry, a deck and a pool. And so the additional, well, fourth accessory structure is included in the variance this month.
And I would ask if the applicant could please come forward and add anything you wish to supplement what we had done last month. And you may want to just give a little bit of a background for people who weren't here for the last meeting.
Um.
And I'll create your name and address as well. Thank you.
Um, last month, last month, you guys said the, we had the four and the five-foot variance. That was fine. They were gonna do one structure for the pool, but you're saying now you're not allowed. So I don't then, all the feeding, all the, it's good. It just needs, it's the fourth thing. I didn't, I didn't realize that the garage was considered a structure because it was here when we bought the house. It's a shared garage. We only have half of it.
But it is on your property?
It is on my property, yeah. It's, it's, it, the, the property line goes right through the garage.
And the garage is actually on a different street than the house.
Yeah, it's a very weird, it's a straight layout.
Ma'am, you indicated, this is Keith Frary, you indicated that um, I, the, I think in, in the application that's before us, your neighbors on either side were okay with this.
Every, every, all, all, the whole tile block is okay with it.
Well, I, that's, that's great. One of the concerns we had last time was that the neighbor behind, is there a neighbor behind, received adequate notice of this whole proceeding, just in case? We were just trying to be safe with that. Have you had a conversation with the neighbor in the, in the back of the house?
Oh, yes, yes. They, they, they are well aware of the pool and everything.
Okay.
Everything.
And they're fine with it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, because that was the, that was the situation if it was gonna be closer to the, to the line, but that would be the person that'd impact the most, so not a problem.
It won't be, it won't be now because the deck, because it's 120 square feet, it's nine feet. So it, it definitely goes past the five-feet property line. We were just looking, because you, if you did it as one structure, it had to be 15 feet. But because you're gonna use it as two structures, it's definitely nine feet off the property line. And the pool is 19 feet off the property line. So we're, we're 100% good with that.
Okay. And we're, and if I remember correctly, and I apologize, it's been a long week. Um, the, uh, you had talked about a fence around the pool?
The fences around the backyard, we, we haven't put it in yet. You's okayed it last time. You said that was fine. I didn't put anything in yet because I'm waiting for everything to be approved at the same time, so I don't have to have people come up more than once to help.
Absolutely fine. I just, I remember the conversation, but to be quite honest, I don't remember what, what we were saying. So you are gonna put up a fence around the pool, doing it all at the same time?
Yeah, I'm gonna just do it all, all at once.
Okay, thank you.
Can I mute myself now?
Not quite yet.
Okay.
Any que, any other questions from the board? Ms. Robertson, do we need any sideline setbacks now at all?
Sorry, I'm keeping myself unmuted. Um, the setbacks for the pool are just the, let me just double check here. Yeah, so it's 11 feet from one side property line and 10 from another. So a four-foot side yard setback and a five-foot side yard setback. And then the fourth.
Is that the distance from the pool or from the deck?
That's the distance from the pool. So the deck itself needs all the setback requirements. The setbacks for the deck are fine. It's just that the deck is the fourth accessory structure.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard for or against the application? Hearing none, any other discussion from the board? I would ask if anyone wishes to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, this is Keith Frary. I'll move that we, I'm gonna deal with all three variances at the same time. I think we kind of hashed this around at, at great length last meeting. And we're, you know, very close to, to, uh, to approving this. But we kind of got sidetracked because of the, the deck issue. So I, I think that, uh, the neighbors have all acquiesced to this. They've all said it's fine, particularly the neighbor in the rear, who was the one most impacted with the, the deck issue. Um, and everybody has given their approval. So clearly, it's not gonna have an adverse effect on the neighborhood. Um, I, I don't view it to be substantial. All these Van Antwerp lots are, are either a strange configuration or very small. And I think everybody's confronted with the same issue. Uh, I don't think there's gonna be an environmental impact. I don't think the applicant has any, any other, uh, way to achieve this. It's going pretty much, pretty much in the middle of the backyard. And so any movement one direction or another is still gonna have the same problem. So for those reasons, I would move that we grant the three variances for this applicant.
A motion has been made. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, this is Mr. Latif. I second the motion for all the reasons stated. And I recall, uh, this before, and it was the, the deck that was the issue. So for all these reasons, I second the motion.
There's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I would ask if the clerk could please call the roll.
Mr. Frary?
Yes.
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Ms. McGinnis?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Hope?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Chairman Goodman?
I will vote yes for the reasons stated. The variance is granted. I want to thank you for your time, both this evening and last week, last month, to present your matter to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'm so sorry. I never did this before. What is my next step? What do, what do I do?
The building department will send you a letter, and then we will start moving forward on your permit application.
Oh, perfect. Okay. Thank you so much, everyone.
Have a nice evening.
Have a great evening. Thank you.
If we could call the next case, please?
Appeal of Chandravadi Seetal for a variance from section 220-B2, section 220-18B3B, and section 220-13 Schedule IC of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskiuna as applies to the property at 601 Michel Way, Niskiuna, New York, located in the R2 medium density residential zoning district for a fourth accessory structure and to maintain a 12-foot by 24-foot carport within a designated side yard setback. Schedule 220-18B2 states that there shall not be more than three accessory structures on a lot. There are currently four: a shed, in-ground pool, fence, and now a carport. Therefore, a variance for one additional accessory structure is required. Section 220-18B3B states that the required side and rear yard dimensions for major accessory structures shall be the same as applies to the principal building. As defined, major accessory structures are detached accessory buildings or other structures in excess of 120 square feet. The carport at 288 square feet is a major accessory structure. Section 220-13 Schedule IC establishes minimums for R2 zoning districts and a side setback requirement of 15 feet. As built, the carport is located eight feet from the side property line. Therefore, seven-foot side yard setback variance is required. Thirteen notices were mailed, one response, and Laura has that response.
I, I actually have two things I want to, can you guys see my screen?
No.
No.
Sorry. Oh, wrong button. You're under the deck. Okay, can you see it now?
Starting to.
Starting to come up.
Okay, so I'm just gonna share this email, and then I have an email from the building inspector with pictures, just to help. So this email is from Susan Waldron Troyat Arnold from 605 Michel Way. She says, Dear sir, madam, thank you for mailing me the information regarding the above referenced appeal for variances. I live next door to the Seetals at 605 Michel Way. If I understand your letter correctly, the Seetals are requesting variances for the existing carport built next to their home, not an additional carport. If so, I also understand there are two variances requested. The first variance having to do with the number of the structures on the lot is not one that I wish to express an opinion on if the currently built carport is the structure in question. The Seetals maintain their property beautifully and impeccably. So unless there will be another additional carport added to the property, I have no concern there. However, I would like to speak with the second variance requested having to do with the setback requirement from property lines because of a problem that occurred last year. Last summer in July 2019, the Seetals installed a similar carport in the same place that the current carport is now standing. All was well for a short time, but the sides were added, but then sides were added to the carport. Shortly after the sides were added, a strong storm blew the entire metal structure up and over their six-foot fencing, landing the carport upside down in their rear yard. I can only think that the addition of the sides created a wind tunnel which allowed that structure to lift into the air and be moved so dramatically. It was quite unbelievable, given its size and heavy material. My current concern is that the car, is that the carport currently in place is open, allowing wind to pass through and around it, and hopefully it will not move from its place. However, it is possible it could move, or the design of the carport could be altered, and then a repeat of last year's incidents could occur. Because the carport is quite close to the side of my house, I am concerned it could blow into my house, home, causing much damage. If I can be assured that this could not happen, then I would not object to the request for a side yard setback variance. Thank you for your consideration. And then, um, just to clarify on that email, this is, there is no carport added. This is existing. It's out there. That's what it looks like attached to the side of the house there.
That's the current picture.
Yeah, and there isn't an additional one to be added. This is cited as built.
And I'm assuming there wa, there wasn't an application for a building permit when this was built?
Correct. It was, it was cited for work without a permit.
Okay. And were there, were there any other letters?
Nope.
Okay. I would ask if the applicant could please come forward, set forth your name and address, the, what your application is, the reason for it, and what efforts you made to mitigate, mitigate the need for the size or the existence of the variance.
Um, my name is Chandravadi Seetalal. Um, uh, we live at 601 Michel Way, Niskiuna. Um, my husband is here. Um, he have a stroke and he can't talk well. So I'm gonna do the talking for him. Um, we did bought a carport from Lowe's, um, last year. And the neighbor 605 Michel Way, he put it on for us. And when he put it on, he didn't anchor it down. He took the anchor and he put it in his garage. And we did put the car, a tarp around it. And we had a heavy wind, and it blow over my fence. He didn't, it didn't damage his, his yard or anything. So, um, I had a little argument with him, and I told him that he didn't anchor it down. And you're not gonna do any work for me. And we did have an argument. So I call Allen Factory Outlet, and I asked them to come put it down for me. And I asked them all the questions that the wind gonna blow it, if you anchor it down, they said they anchor it down, the snow can fall, and it's 200 miles per hour only can take it up, down, that they put in a lot of carport all over the state. And 200 mile per hour can take down a house. So I said, okay. So we put it on the Monday, and the Tuesday, we got, um, a notice on the door. And why I put the carport on, um, my husband had a, a, a stroke, and it's, he can't walk. And our garage, to put the wheelchair with the car in, we don't have no room. And it's hard on me because right now I'm going through treatment. Um, I'm going through chemo. And it's hard on me, and I have a disabled son. And I have to take my husband to therapy and doctor, and that's why I put the carport in. And I didn't know that we can only have three things in the yard. We bought the house with the fence and the pool, but we did put the shed in. And I never know that we, we can have another one. And I'm so sorry, but I'm asking you if you can please grant us because I'm going through a lot, and my husband is going through a lot. And I have an older son, but he moved to Ohio. I don't have any help, and I don't have no family here.
Okay. Thank you for your time. Are there any members of the board who have questions for the applicant?
Laura, can you put the picture back up, please?
Sure.
This has not been before us before for a variance, right?
That's correct.
Because I remember a carport variance in a house that looks almost identical to this.
I did too. I saw this, I thought the same thing, and I was looking for it because I was thinking it may have been even in the same area.
Yeah. Ma'am, uh, as I'm looking at the photograph, the pavement that forms your driveway, does it go up the side of your house?
Yes.
So in other words, where you have the carport located, and I'm looking at a photograph of it, the, that is paved underneath, at least part of it is paved?
Yes.
Okay.
Blacktop. The blacktop.
Yes, yes, the blacktop. Um, question for you, uh, you said your husband's in a wheelchair, correct?
Yeah.
Uh, is there some kind of wheelchair accessible entrance or exit at your home?
No.
I don't see a ramp or anything to your front door.
No, no, we, we hold him, um, we, we get him downstairs. We have a raised ramp. So he, he downstairs in the room, and we roll him out from the garage. And we have a door side, and we open it, and we hold him, and we put him in the car.
Okay, so when he comes outside to use the carport or get in the carport, he has to go through the garage?
No, we have a side door from the garage.
No, I see. No, I see the side door from the garage, but, uh, i- is that side door go into the garage and then through to your house?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, and you're saying that the car in the garage is?
We have a, we have a freezer there, um, two freezer there and a cupboard. And it's very tight for the car and the, and the wheelchair to get in there.
I, I see a car, at least what seems to be a car parked in the driveway. Where, where do you park your car?
Under the, 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 the carport.
I, I'm, I'm talking about before you, are those your two vehicles there?
My son have a vehicle here. My son and my, that one is my husband's car, but we don't use that one.
Okay, so, so the.
He don't drive. He don't drive.
Ma'am, I understand that. I'm just, I'll be perfectly honest with you. I understand your predicament, and I sympathize with it. Carports are generally, uh, they're, they're not a, an item necessarily that we're willing to approve because they, they just don't look real good. If you understand, you have a very nice looking house, and then to have a carport. Are you intending to put the sides, the tarp around the carport?
No, no, no.
Not at all?
No.
Are you sure?
Yes, I, I'm sure.
I think that's what led to your problems before in terms of, of, uh, you know, the wind picking your carport up and flipping it over the fence.
Um, 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 sir, he didn't anchor, he didn't anchor it down.
No, I understand that. And you're saying that somebody is now coming anchored it down?
It's anchor, it's anchor.
Where the anchor?
This is not the one, um, worth flip over the fence. We get rid of that one. This is a new struc, structure altogether.
I understand that. Where I'm concerned about is where are the anchors on this carport?
On in the ground.
Okay, but you have one whole side of it that's in, that's in pavement, in blacktop. You can't an, anchor a, you can't anchor a, a carport in blacktop?
No, they anchor it down. It's there. I saw it. No, no, no. It's, you have the anchor there.
So Keith said, so we would check the anchoring of the, um, carport during building permit. Um, we don't do the inspection until after it goes to the zoning board. But, um, it would have to be properly anchored in order for the building inspector to approve it. And he would go out and look and see the anchors.
Well, but by then, you've got, if you've approved the variance, you got a variance granted, right?
Yeah, but you, you, you have the variance granted, but the carport couldn't be constructed if it doesn't meet code.
Well, I understand that, but certainly the next person that came along, who has the benefit of that variance, could, right?
No, you would always have to have a, a variance just says that the structure can go there. The, the, the code would always make sure that it was anchored and properly, like the snow would go there. The, the one that blew away didn't have a building permit. The building inspectors didn't look at that one.
I, I understand it. Clearly didn't have an anchor either. My, my position is, is I'm not, I, I'm not real keen on granting variances and then worrying later on that, that, you know, things are, things are appropriately anchored and whatnot. Uh, you know, the other issue is, is putting sides on this thing.
No, we not gonna put no side, sir. We promise. We not gonna do the side, no.
What are the other structures that she has in the yard?
A shed, a pool, and a fence.
I'm sorry, a fence, a pool, and a what? Shed?
And a shed. Yeah, let me see if I can pull that up.
Are those all in the backyard?
Yeah.
They're all within the fence in the backyard?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Latif here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, quick question. Uh, ma'am, it sounds like this, uh, uh, access, do you have the garage, does it open from the front? I know you have a side door. Do you also, does that garage open in the front? Do you have a car in there?
It's no car there, no.
Okay, so can you, are you able to open that door, automatic opener, and pull up the car to have your husband get in in it? That would be much easier, it looks to me, than that carport that you have there.
Sir, I put it because of the snow. And when I, I, I don't have strength to do things like before. Um, um, I have cancer, and my husband have a stroke. And I'm, I'm trying my best.
Yes. I, I, I understand your situation, and I am very sympathetic about your situation. The only thing, uh, we have, the, the question I have, because you're not gonna have any sides on that carport. Would the snow gonna, the snow is gonna blow in there. It's gonna be much harder for you. You'll see what I'm talking about if this gets approved. Uh, and you, you're gonna have snow all over there that you have to shovel, and you have to do this. What I was trying to say, and just a question I'm asking, if you open that door in the front, would you be able to, uh, would that?
Sir, um, um, why I can't open the front? And, and my house at the front, when the ice froze, and I fell down like four times already, the gutter and the eye, the water leaking, and it turned ice in the front there. And that's why I am afraid to go in the front. And if I break my hand and foot, that's another problem. So I can open it.
Ma'am, I'm talking about the garage door, not the front door.
Yeah, they, in the front there, the gutter, when it's ice, it drip, and it turn ice in front of the garage.
Right in front of the garage. Okay. Well, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Other questions from the board?
Uh, this is, uh, Mr. Green, uh, question for the, thank you for, uh, being here. And I, I wish you all the best with the medical situations in your family. Uh, may I inquire, what's in the garage right now?
We have, um, our, like, the washing machine and the refrigerator, the, the freezer. It, it's nothing can fit there. We make shell.
Yeah, if you were to remove, uh, one or more of those appliances, would there be more room in the garage?
Pardon me?
If you were to remove one or more of those appliances, would there, would there be more room in the garage?
No, they, when we bought the house, they, they make the, the garage that it, you can't put a car in there.
And why's that?
Uh?
Why is that, that you say you can't put a car in the garage?
A car can't fit in the garage. We never, it's hard to get in the, with a car and go in the car like to go wrong. There's no room.
Yeah, and so that, that's why I was asking. You had mentioned there were three items in the garage.
I, we have a, we, we have a freezer. I, we have a, we, we have a freezer.
Yeah.
And we have two freezer with our food inside.
Yes. So if the freezers were somewhere else in the house rather than in the garage, would there be more room in the garage?
It's hard for me to put him in the garage.
What's in the shed, ma'am, out in the back?
We have store, we store our things there.
Wha- what do you store there?
Like, um, our outdoor chairs and tables and grill and.
See, what I'm looking at at this point, ma'am, is you don't need a, you don't need a setback variance, correct, Laura?
There's a small setback variance for the, to the side neighbor's lot, the one that commented.
But in terms of accessory structures, if you were to, obviously you've got a pool and a fence which are gonna stay. Uh, you're not.
We don't know, we don't know if we keep in the pool too, because the pool need a lot of work and we don't afford it.
So if you don't keep the pool, you only have three accessory structures and you just have to deal with the small setback. Do you follow me? See, the issue right now is you already have three accessory structures and this is a fourth which requires a variance in addition to the small side yard setback which requires a variance. If you were to, if you're not gonna keep the pool or the, getting rid of the pool, then that eliminates the need for, for the one variance for a fourth accessory structure. You follow me?
Yes, sir, I don't understand them much, but, um, I don't know that you only can get three. I didn't know you can get four.
Well, you're not allowed to have four. And right now, if you, with this carport, you have four. The issue is, is, is you have a shed which you say you store stuff in. You have a fence, that's two, and you have a pool, that's three. And the carport makes four. If you're getting rid of the pool, then you only, now you're down to three and you don't need a variance for that carport. You just need a very small side yard setback, correct, Laura?
Oops, that's correct.
That's an in-ground pool, I believe, isn't it?
Yes.
Oh, it's an in-ground pool. I'm sorry. I thought it was.
Yeah, they want like twenty, almost twenty thousand dollars to fill it and I, I don't have the money.
Okay.
It's not open. It's closed.
Understood. I thought it was an above-ground pool. Sorry. But ma'am, you said you were thinking about getting rid of the pool?
Yeah, but we don't have the money right now to fill it. I told, um, Mr. Ken that, you know, we don't have the money. And he understood and he said, yes, it's a lot of money.
And is the, you said the pool isn't open. Is it being maintained in a safe condition at this point?
Oh, yes, it's covered. Yes, yes.
Any other questions from the board?
Uh, this is Katrina Pacheco. I do have a question for the applicant. Uh, is there any way for the, uh, the items in the shed to be stored elsewhere?
The shed is outside. We, we can, um, go out there in the winter time.
Ma'am, what I'm, I'm trying to ask is can any of the items that are in the shed, can they be stored in the house instead?
Or the garage?
In the garage, yeah.
I don't know. The car, the garage is a one-car garage. And to put the van inside is very tight.
But how about the things that you have in the shed? Could those be put in your garage? Is what the question was, ma'am.
The things in the shed to put in the garage?
Yes, could that be done? That was the question.
No, that's outside stuff, like the garden things, the table, the chair.
So you, you can't put those in your garage?
And what we gonna do with the shed?
Well, if you didn't have a shed, you wouldn't need the, the, the extra variance is why the question was posed.
Oh, okay, okay. But then we gotta break the big shed down.
Well, what the board is looking at is that there are alternatives to granting a variance.
Oh, I see, I see.
We're required to review any alternatives to granting a variance. So. Ma'am, if you don't use the, the garage for, to keep a car in, you can use the garage for storage, which is what you're using the shed for. You can store whatever's in the shed in the garage and then get rid of that, that accessory structure. How big's the shed?
I, I hope this is the shed.
Is it like a ten by ten, ten by twelve?
I think so. Yeah, right? It's a little bigger than that.
Well, as Mr. Goodman indicated, we're trying to see if we can come up with an option for you that doesn't require, see, if we grant a variance for a, a fourth accessory structure and, and either Alexis or, or Laura, help me out here. Uh, we grant a, a fourth accessory structure, it doesn't necessarily have to be a carport, right? Or does it have to be a carport? If, if this lady moves, she and her husband move and the variance follows the property, is it a variance for just a fourth accessory structure or a variance for a carport?
It's a variance for the carport. Yeah, this, this specific structure.
So that means that the next person that moves in the house could have a carport regardless of what the neighbors want.
Except it wouldn't be able to, I mean, so this is when we get into the, uh, how big, if it changes the footprint, meaning, you know, they can't tear down this carport and put up in one that's different in footprint than the one that we would be granting the variance for. It would have to be substantially the, exactly the same, no, no bigger. Um, I, I mean, I don't, I don't know if it could be smaller, but it, it, they would have to come back before the zoning board of appeals because the variance would no longer be valid.
Right, but it's a carport nonetheless, so. All right, thank you.
Mr. Ferry, the application shows that the fence is fourteen feet by seventeen feet.
The shed is?
Yes.
Thank you.
Laura, I'm sorry. Laura, I know this is unusual, but I mean, if the concern is with, I mean, since this is just such a specific need for the carport um, and the fear is potentially that this, this variance runs with the land. Um, I know it would be unusual, but couldn't be conditioned the variance on it, um, not, not, not running with the land, but running with the owner.
I mean, I have seen that. We don't typically do that, but I ha- I've seen it rarely. It, the problem with it running with the owner is that in, it certainly can be enforced, but I think that it doesn't, it typically will slip through the class, cracks unless there's a complaint. And then when there's a complaint, you could go and research it and be like, oh, it ran with the owner. You have to take it down.
It could be like how we do the home, the, um, when we have the, I forget the word. Linda can come jump in on with the words, the, for when you have like a, in-law suite, um, those don't run with the land. They have to, whenever somebody moves or you no longer need them, you have to go before the building, uh, department. Linda, what are those called?
The accessory home care unit has a.
Yeah. Yeah, that, that restriction. I mean, that's an alternate route. I mean, that, if the, if the zoning board of appeals is concerned about it running with the land.
So I think Fred accidentally kicked off the meeting. We'll give him like another second to join.
I apologize. It knocked me off, but I'm back.
So Fred, um, Alexis was just saying that potentially if the zoning board was concerned about, um, the longevity of the carport, that it could run with the person and not the land.
Are we sure about that?
We've done it before. We'd have to, we don't have a four, but in the.
I can tell you this, we've never done it. In all the years, I don't know how many years I've sat on this board, we have never conditioned a variance on the occupant. It's always been through all the council that we've had and we've had a number of them. We've always.
I agree with Mr. Ferry about that because.
We've always been advised that it runs with the land, not with the occupant.
So we have, if you drive down Belltown Road right before you get to the JCC, there's a medical office on the left, on the corner of Knowles and Belltown Road. And that was given a variance that runs with the doctor, so. Um, and the only reason I know is.
Was it a use variance or an area variance?
Yeah, off the top of my head, I'd have to go research it. But the reason I know is because the doctor's getting ready to sell it. And they were like, well, what happens when I sell it and retire? Um, because it is specific to the person. It's written right into it. I have seen it.
Again, is it a use variance or an area variance?
I will take a look and see if I can find it now when we're speaking. But I mean, if that's not something the board wants to do, that's always their just prerogative. I'll go see what I can find.
Ms. Kim, you had said that, um, that the town has done this before. Is it?
So, so when I said the town has done this before, I haven't meant in the context of the zoning board of appeals. I meant in the context of issuing of other, uh, you know, giving permissive use, um, in the context of, uh, accessory home care, uh, units where, um, you know, somebody is permitted to, to, to have a certain structure and that the, that upon either, you know, no longer the need for the structure exists or upon moving, it's almost like a deed restriction. Um, it's personal. I know, but yes, I understand that it would be unusual. Um, if we're asking for the legality, if the zoning board of appeals is able to condition an area variance rather than a use variance on the owner rather than making it run with the land. I mean, I, I, I don't see, I mean, the zoning boards, I, I mean, I would believe that would be, could be deemed a reasonable condition, which the, the zoning board of appeals has the authority and jurisdiction to impose reasonable conditions on, uh, an area variance. So I mean, the reasonable condition could be, rather than making it with owner, it could be temporal, saying that it would only be valid for, you know, twenty years, ten years. I mean, given, and that would be reasonable. I mean, you can make the argument and given that, you know, the carport itself, looking at the photos, doesn't look like if it's really meant to be, uh, you know, uh, lasting through, through decades and decades. Just an options for you guys to consider.
Thank you.
Fred off again?
Talking to me, sir?
Yeah, he said he was joining with his land. He said he was joining differently tonight. It doesn't seem to be working very good.
No, I'm saying, have we lost him?
Yeah, he's gone.
Mr. Goodman, if you're there, speak up. Mr. Ferry, there's your answer.
We'll just give him a second again.
Thank you, Mr. Green. The search, where, instead of where's Waldo, we've got where's Fred?
Yes, sir. It appear that's the case.
He's calling. Or he left.
Chairman Goodman said he was connecting through the ethernet line, direct line instead of going wifi.
Whoops.
That would be a better connection.
Ma'am, just so you know what's going on, our chairman who was with us a little earlier got knocked off the, uh, the virtual platform here. So we're waiting for him to join again before we keep going, okay?
All right. Thank you, sir.
Sorry for the delay.
That's okay.
Did you just join on five-five?
What happened? You throw up?
Hold on. I'll, I'm gonna check.
Missito?
Yeah?
This is John Hope. While we're waiting here, I just had a, a question for you. While you're, when you are, uh, and your husband are accessing the carport through the garage, have you made any accommodations in the house to make it easier for you to exit the home, uh, through the garage?
We, my husband, we live downstairs. We rarely stay downstairs.
So going through the garage, do you, do you have an opportunity to avoid any stairs going that way?
No, no stairs, no.
So there are no stairs going.
We have stairs to come upstairs. We have a raised ranch. I don't know how you, but if you, we was living upstairs, he have to come up on the step. But we have a room downstairs and we sleep downstairs. We have a bathroom, but I do cook on my, uh, we don't cook too.
Under, understood. And so, so let, let me see if I understand. What you're telling me correctly is that you live downstairs with your husband other than cooking upstairs. So your husband doesn't have to use the steps, uh, to go through the front door, correct?
Right.
Right. So you've already made, you've already made accommodations in your house of the way you live to be able to accommodate your husband's disability, correct?
Yes, yes.
And what you're seeking from the board is another accommodation of that disability?
Pardon me?
You're seeking an additional accommodation to accommodate your husband's disability, correct? Of being able to access the carport?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Sir, and I don't, when I do my, I, I don't, I, I, I was so, I'm so skinny now, I can't deal with all this harassing and we can't afford to get the aid because we have the house and he can't have insurance or government aid.
Let me ask you, let me ask you another question. Is the, is the reason you have, uh, multiple appliances in the garage because you're living on the first floor as opposed to the second floor and that's more convenient for you?
Yes, sir, because we can't, he can't come up the stairs. And we have to have the thing downstairs because we live downstairs almost. We can't live upstairs with him. I can come up the stairs, but he can't come up.
But your husband can, correct?
Right.
It's not, it's not easy for him to come up.
No, and we have a, a jacuzzi, uh, downstairs. We took it out and I make a, a a shower where I can roll him in with the wheelchair. You know, I have a shower chair where I can roll him in. So we did make the downstairs for like a handicap situation.
I'm still trying to reach Fred, but I'm unable to. I'm gonna send him a couple more emails, but Keith, do you mind taking over as, um, chairman? And I'll just keep working on it.
Uh, not a problem.
If, if I may, uh, speak up for just one moment. I didn't have, uh, the benefit of reading a full message that dropped down on my cell phone screen. The part that I caught, I believe it suggested Fred could hear us, but he, uh, obviously is not being heard by.
Joined by the phone and we can't hear him, Fred, press star six. Um, sometimes when you're joining in the phone in the middle of the call, you have to press star six for the system to unmute you?
Well, indeed, uh, as I had saw that flash. And if he can hear us, he could hear you and I would invite him to attempt to use that. And if that doesn't work and he can hear us, maybe, uh, he could just unplug everything and use his cell phone. And if that doesn't work and he can hear us, maybe, uh, he could just unplug everything and use his cell phone and join the meeting by phone. If that's possible.
He can. I will email him the phone number just in case.
Star six not working. Call the number. I just received a message from Chairman Goodman.
Um, hold on.
I'll be right back on, on.
Mr. Goodman, if you are able to hear us, trying iPad, he says. Mr. Goodman, perhaps you could skip the ethernet cables in the iPads and, uh, pick up your personal cell phone if you are able and just call in and participate and join by phone. You may do that as follows. One, three, six, one, four, three, six, eight, zero, four, six, ten, two, six, zero, five, eight, one, eight, five, zero. If you need the number or the PIN again, I invite you to take a peek at the email that Ms. Robinson sent, Ms. Robertson sent us where she advises how we may join, uh, the Google Meet. And there's a section, join by phone.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Have you ever had to press star six when you joined by phone?
I have had, not had to press star six.
Okay, so.
Another message, star six not working. Yes, Mr. Goodman, we know that. Skip pressing star six. Unplug, hang up, pick up your cell phone, follow Lori's instructions to join the Google meeting by phone.
So, is Mr. Mr. uh, Ferrari already agreed to step in, uh, continue the meeting? I think given the fact that we're dealing with a family that, um, is going through some hardship right now, rather than worry about Mr. Goodman's technology, we can proceed with the meeting if Mr. Ferrari is okay with that.
I'm absolutely fine with that. If you would like me to do that, I will.
That's my opinion.
And I can, I can continue to work with Fred, but I think we can, yeah.
Why don't, why don't? Why don't we proceed with the meeting? Ma'am, just so you're aware, we only have six members right now that are on the meeting. Are, are you? Is she with us?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, ma'am. Just so you understand.
Excuse me, Mr. Ferrari, I apologize. But I'm getting dropdown messages and Chairman Goodman is indicating he has no objection and consent to, uh, should it be the will of, uh, everyone to have you step in and act as chairman so that we may move forward?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Green. Uh, ma'am, just, just so you're aware, because of this technology problem, we only have six voting members that are currently with us on this call. Uh, you still need to have, you still need to have four to, four, uh, at least four to grant your variance. Um, so that moves four out of six instead of four out of seven. Just so you're aware of that, ma'am, because of that problem, you have the option of, uh, deferring this matter to the next board meeting. Or you can go ahead and proceed today, whichever you would rather. Do you understand that?
What we, what we should do?
Well, here's the issue. You get to decide, ma'am. You get to decide what you want to do. The problem is, is because we only have six voting members who are with us on the call now. You need to get four of those six to, uh, to affirmatively approve your variant. If we have seven members, you need four of the seven. So, uh, I just want you to be aware of that. Because of that situation, you have the option of moving this entire matter to the next meeting of next month, which would be the October meeting. And, uh, have this heard in the October meeting where hopefully we would have a full complement of board members. That's, that's all I'm telling you, giving you that option. You can go forward tonight or you can wait and go forward next meeting in October when hopefully we have a full board. So it's up to you.
Yes, sir. I will.
Do you want to proceed tonight? Or do you want to wait until next meeting next month?
And if I proceed tonight, what gonna happen?
I, I can't even tell you that, what's gonna happen. I can't predict what's gonna happen, but all I can tell you is, is for you, for your variance to be approved, you would have to have four of the six board members.
Yes, I understand, but I don't know what to do. I never went through this.
No, I understand, ma'am, and I'm just trying to explain, I'm required to explain that option to you. Uh, i- i- it's not gonna penalize you if you go forward and, uh, it's just, I guess the best way to put it is your odds may be better with a full complement of seven board members. Or it may be just the same with six board members. I have no idea.
Can somebody help me here else? I don't know what to say.
Can people hear me?
Hello?
Yes. I'm back. I apologize. I reset the whole thing, but I did the call in number and the star six and it wouldn't unmute.
That happens with Jengis. It usually works for people, but not always.
Okay, so now we have Mr. Goodman back, ma'am, so it's a moot point.
And I get here most of what was happening.
So we're done. We're, we're, we're basically at the point where the audience is ready to weigh in if they want, and then, then we move to motion phase, Mr. Goodman.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard for or against this application? Hearing none, I would ask if any members wish to make a motion.
Yeah, this is, this is, uh, John Hope. Um, I will, uh, move that we, uh, approve the variance. Um, I think in this particular application, what weighs heavily in my mind is the fact of the significant health implications that the applicant has. I am cognizant of the fact that this variance would run with the land. Um, but I'm also cognizant or I'm taking into consideration that the Americans with Disabilities Act requires, um, us to take into consideration, um, the applicant's, uh, disabilities. I don't know that the applicant can achieve, um, what they're seeking to achieve, which is easy access, uh, to allow, um, uh, one of the applicants to be uh, loaded into a vehicle with a wheelchair, um, through the garage. Um, and if there's any other, uh, really feasible means to accommodate that. I understand it might not be the ideal method in any event, um, but you know, that's what the applicant has to work with. Um, so I, I, I don't know that there's any other feasible means to achieve what the applicant seeks to achieve. Um, whether the carport will have an undesirable change in the neighborhood. Um, I, I, I think that the, you know, the carport is now well constructed, well anchored in. Well, I understand that there's a general, um, uh, dislike for carports in the, in the community. Under these circumstances, I don't think that that would be dispositive. Uh, I do believe that the variance is substantial. Um, and, uh, I don't believe that there's gonna be any adverse physical or environmental impacts to the neighborhood or the district as a result of this carport. I think that, uh, the other, the issues with respect to it previously blowing away have been, um, resolved by the applicant. In addition to that, the building department would be looking at how the, uh, carport is anchored in any event. Um, because of the nature of the disability, I don't know that this was self-created and although this is a close, um, difficult type application, I think, um, by the nature of the, um, applicant's condition that that, uh, uh, mitigates in terms of, uh, approving the application. So for those reasons, I would move to approve, um, both variances.
There's been a motion made. Is there a second?
I'd like to second, uh, that motion, uh, for the reasons stated. I'd also like to add that, um, this certainly isn't self-created. No one would choose to have a stroke or have cancer. Um, and we strive to be a community where people can age in place. Um, granting this variance would allow them additional time in their home.
There's been a motion made and seconded. Any discussion from any board members on the motion? Hearing none?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Latif, just a quick question. I'm just, uh, wondering, uh, again about, uh, the question of is this gonna be only allowed for these owners of that house and this is, will be gone once if that house was sold someday, or this is gonna be transferable? To know before I make my decision.
The way the motion has been made, it would be, it would run with the property. If you wish to move an amendment to the motion to limit it to these owners of the home, you are free to make that motion to amend the motion on the floor.
Before, before we.
I would like to make a motion that since, since Mr. Hope did mention that this is a health issue and, uh, and for this, uh, applicant, so I'd like to make a motion that this carport will be for those owners and not to be, uh, carried on by, uh, new people moving into the house and so on.
So your, your motion is to amend the motion on the floor to limit it to the current owners?
Yes.
Is there a second for that motion?
I'll second that one as well.
Okay, there's been a motion to, made to amend the motion. So the first order of business would be a discussion and vote on the motion, on Mr. Latif's motion for an amendment. Any discussion on the motion for the amendment?
Yeah, are we sure that this is, is permissible? I mean, we cannot, we cannot blaze forward with an amendment to a motion that we're not even sure is legal.
I believe counsel indicated that we could so limit it.
Right, and that's why I'm asking because I think counsel did say she can. I've never heard of it before. I've been on the board over 10 years. I've never heard of it. But if counsel said so, uh, then I'm, I'm taking her up on that.
I mean, the reason, and I, so the reason justifying my, the legal advice rendered is because, I mean, if you find that it's reasonable to mitigate the, um, the hard, the adverse, you know, impacts or, you know, because you think it's self-created. I mean, I think that the reasonable, if you find that it's reasonable, the condition, then you're, it's within your jurisdiction to do so, even if it is unusual.
Okay. Well, I mean, in the past, we've never done it this way because we're always, we were told for years that it goes with the property. But if we can amend it and make it, uh, because it's, it's a health issue, the situation, if we can do that and you say so, then, uh.
Yeah, I'm comfortable saying you can rely on legal advice and if you so wish to condition it.
And what happened, that, and what happens if that legal advice is incorrect?
Then that, that, that's on me and I, I'm confident that.
And I'm not trying to put it on you. What I'm saying is, you know, I think it would be.
Invalid. I mean, if it was, see, it was deemed, if the court deemed that the, that this couldn't run with the land, that it had to be, you know, that it had to be in rem, it couldn't be quasi in rem, um, then I got, it would deem it invalid and, and the applicant would be in violation of our zoning code. It wouldn't be that, you know, that, that's the, you know, the greatest extent to which the harm could be if this ended up being invalid.
Maybe, I, maybe a prudent and reasonable alternative would be to obtain confirmation of that legal opinion. And, and I'm certainly, Ms. Kim, not doubting that, but the problem is, as Mr. Latif has indicated, and this has come directly from prior town council and a number of them, that this is not something, the, these area variances follow the land and there's no, there, there's no latitude in that. And I'm concerned that this board is going to take action that is, that may not be legal, which is then going to put this applicant at a horrible disadvantage because then she's in violation and has to remove the carport. So maybe the thing to do is to table this. I know that's not desirable, but table this till we can get a legal opinion, uh, confirm the legal opinion that we've been given in this case. That's my suggestion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So you would be moving to table this for further legal research?
I would move that we table the motions that have currently been made. Mr. Hope's motion and the, um, the amendment given by Mr. Latif, that we table those for the time being until we can get confirmation of Ms. Kim's representation that this is indeed legal for this board to condition this on just this applicant. Provide this variance for just this applicant rather than it running with the land.
And, and so that it doesn't deter, I mean, I don't want to pull, have the applicant come before us again, be since she's already made her case. I don't think any other thing that she said would impact a decision. So I mean, and also the alternative is just to move forward with the vote, uh, if you feel you can grant the area variance without any conditions.
Um, just a point of order, we don't have a second Mr. Latif's motion? Um, and then.
We did Ms. McGinnis', um, second Mr. Latif's motion.
Oh, she did? Oh, okay.
Yes.
Just as a prac, as a practical matter, um, it would be highly unusual that we would condition one of these area variances, whether it's legal or not legal. I don't know why this particular applicant would have to be burdened by the need to remove the carport prior to selling the property. The carport wouldn't be increased, wouldn't be allowed to be increased or changed in any character. So I don't know why I would be pointing at, why would be creating this additional burden on this applicant who has demonstrated the need, um, because of, you know, serious medical conditions.
Before we, just to hold on, if everyone can hold on for a moment. Before we debate the merits of the motion, there is a motion on the table from, uh, Mr. Ferrari to table both of these motions. And I believe that that would call for an immediate vote.
Need a second?
I would, I would, to get it to, I, I would second Mr. Ferrari's motion at this point. So I would then call for a vote on the motion to table.
Um, Chairman, I'm sorry to jump in. I did, I was able to research the property in question and I can share my screen. In 1994, we did condition an air, um, an area variance on a, on a, a human.
When was that?
1994.
1994.
I can share the screen if you guys want to see it.
That would be appreciated.
So this is the decision letter. And this is that property that I was speaking to you about. It's an area variance um, for side yards and parking on the intersection of Belltown and Knowles Road. And these are the conditions of the area variance. And, um, this is the condition, all area variances will expire upon the sale of the property or the termination of Dr. Frazier's practice. And upon the sale of the parcel over back to the single family residence. So we have done that before.
So there is precedent for that. So, right now where you have a motion to table, I would ask if we could call the role on the motion to table.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Ms. McGinnis?
No.
Ms. Pacico?
Abstain. I'm sorry.
Mr. Green?
Uh, yes, I vote, uh, uh, for the motion to table, as I understand it, for the purpose to provide an opportunity for confirmation of legal advice given here, which appears to be pretty, uh, important. Yes.
Mr. Hope?
No.
Chairman Goodman?
I will vote yes. The motion would be tabled. The, the. The the action is tabled so that we can confirm with a little bit more research the legal ability to condition based on a individual. Ma'am, we will revisit this next month when we have the ability to have a little bit further legal information.
Okay, so you didn't pass it.
You don't have you don't have to reapply, ma'am. You don't have to necessarily do anything, but we just need a little clear legal opinion on this issue. It's nothing, nothing you did. We just need some clarity so that we can we can then make a vote on the motions that have been made.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you for your patience.
Yes, yeah, thank you for your time this evening.
I'm gonna get back to me.
We will this will be on the calendar for the meeting next month, which would be four weeks from tonight, I believe.
Yes, somebody gonna get back to me?
Yes, Sandra, our office will call you in the morning.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Ms.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
If we could call the next case, please?
Appeal of John Spindler for a variance from Section 220-18B2, 220-18B3B and Section 220-13 Schedule IC of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna as it applies to the property at 1369 Region Street, Niskuna, New York, located in the R2 medium-density residential zoning district for a fourth accessory structure and to construct a 18-foot diameter pool because of designated side yard setback. Section 220-18B2 states that there shall not be more than three accessory structures on a lot. There are currently three accessory structures on the property, a garage, a shed, and a fence. As proposed, the pool represents a fourth accessory structure. Therefore, a variance for one additional accessory structure is required. Section 220-18B3B states that the required side yard, side and rear yard dimensions for major accessory structures shall be the same as applies to the principal building as defined major accessory structures or detached accessory buildings or other structures in excess of 120 square feet. Pool of 254 square feet is a major accessory structure. Section 220-13 Schedule IC establishes a side setback minimum of 15 feet. As proposed, the pool will be located five feet from the side property line. Therefore, a 10-foot side yard setback variance is required. 18 notices were mailed out, zero responses.
I would ask if the applicant could please come forward, state your name and address, summarize your application, and provide the board with any information of what you may have done to mitigate either the need of a variance or the size of your variance.
That's you, Sarah.
Hi, my name is Sarah Spindler and I live at 1369 Region Street. Due to our property, hi, we live in Old Niskuna and as you're aware, the property, they're quite small and where our driveway runs through our backyard, if we were to move the the pool would be essentially in our driveway, which obviously is not safe. If we were move to move the pool up from the back, the pool would be in our patio and our pool, our backyard has a pretty significant incline. So putting a above-ground pool at a pretty significant incline also wouldn't be safe. In terms of the accessory structure, most properties in Old Niskuna do have a detached garage. If this is a significant problem, we would be willing to get rid of our shed to eliminate an accessory structure.
There was a letter dated August 13th that indicated that you would be getting rid of the shed.
Yes, we would be happy to do that.
The letter didn't say that you would if it was needed, but that it was your plan to remove the shed prior to construction.
Yes.
Okay, so then we don't need that variance if you're planning on removing the shed?
Correct, I yeah, I don't know why that was still in here. The shed can come down.
Okay.
I think that'll also give more room for the pool.
I would ask any members of the board to come forward with your questions at this time?
Ma'am, this is this is Keith Frary. I'm looking at the diagram you provided with your application. And am I correct that the driveway, it comes up as you're facing the house, the right side of the house, the driveway comes up and then does it does it go around the garage or directly to the garage?
It goes to the garage and then comes to the left where there is the carport.
Okay, so. So you've got now, are you planning on, because obviously it's an above is it an above-ground pool?
Yes, sir.
Are you planning on putting a deck in the above-ground pool? Because as you can tell from our first case, that creates an issue, so.
No, we're not.
All right, so you've got the garage, you've got the shed, which you're talking about removing, you've got a carport, you've got the pool, so you would only have three.
We'll just take, yeah, we'll just take the shed down because we do have a fence.
And you said that the and I'm looking again at your diagram, you said that there is an incline from the back of your property up to your house?
It goes down to the back of our property, so like down the driveway, our driveway slopes down.
So there's no there's no means that you could move the pool closer to the house to to meet the rear yard setback because of the incline?
Correct, it's a pretty significant incline. So if you looked at our backyard where the pool is now, it would be the only place to put a pool due to the incline of our backyard.
And again, if where the pool is located, if I'm facing your back property line, what is to the left over the is that the neighbor's yard that's to the left?
Yes.
Okay, not the house, it's not not a structure, it's just just the yard. Have you had a conversation? Have you had a conversation with the neighbor? What did they say?
Yes, they're fine with it. We have we're very close with neighbors on both sides.
And nobody's expressed any concern or an issue?
No, we've we've known them since we've lived there for 16 years and there's no concern on either side.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And if you moved it any closer to the driveway, it would be much too close to the driveway, correct?
Correct.
Are there other questions from the board?
Yes, I have a question for the applicant. I believe in the application, it's mentioned that there are fences in your backyard that are yours, those are your fences and not your neighbor's.
Correct, those are our fences.
So if I'm understanding this correctly, then there are already four accessory structures? If a fence is considered an accessory structure, then you have the carport, the garage, the shed, and the pool would be a fifth. Am I misunderstanding something, Laura or?
The shed.
I know the shed would go, but if the shed is gone, we're still left with four. Is am I miscounting something?
Right, does the garage have an extension of a carport or is it a separate structure?
The carport's attached to the garage.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Are there any questions from members of the public who wish to be heard for or against the application? I would ask if any members of the board wish to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, this is Keith Frary. I'm gonna move that we grant the I'm gonna move that we grant the variance. And again, we're just dealing with the setback variances because the applicant has represented that what would be the fourth accessory structure, the shed, will be taken down. With that representation, I move that we approve this these side yard and and rear yard setback that's requested. Clearly, it's not a self-created issue because of the the incline in the rear yard and the presence of the driveway. The applicant is unable to move the pool any further forward to eliminate the rear yard setback or any further towards the garage because of the presence of the driveway would present a safety issue. The neighbors have represented to the applicant and she's represented to us. They have no objection to it, so I don't think there's going to be an adverse effect on the neighborhood. It's it's not hugely substantial, but I think that given the size and the dimensions of of these old Niskuna lots, I don't think that it can be achieved in any other fashion. For those reasons, I move that we approve the variance.
There's been a motion made. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing done, I would ask if the clerk could please call the roll?
Mr. Frary?
Yes.
Mr. Latif?
Yes, for a reason stated.
Ms. McGinnis?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Green?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Hope?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Chairman Goodman?
Yes, for the reasons stated. The motion has passed. I want to thank you for your time this evening and your patience while we dealt with some technical issues.
Thank you very, very much. I really appreciate it.
And if we could, if we could call the fourth case, please?
The appeal of Craig Sarafini for a variance from Section 220-13 and Schedule IE and Section 220-18A2 of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna as it applies to the property at 3410 State Street, Niskuna, New York, located in the CH Commercial Highway Zoning District, to maintain a portable storage unit in the front yard and within the designated front and side yard setbacks. Specifically, the application is denied based upon the following requirements of the zoning ordinance. A, minimum yard dimensions, front, Section 220-13 and Schedule IE requires a front yard setback of 50 feet for automotive sales and service establishments. The site plan indicates a front yard setback for the storage unit of 5 feet 7 inches. Therefore, a variance of 44 feet 5 inches is necessary for the front yard setback of the storage unit. B, minimum yard dimension, side, Schedule 220-13 and Schedule IE require a side yard setback of 25 feet for automotive sales and service establishments. The site plan indicates a side yard setback for a storage unit of 6 feet 6 inches. Therefore, an area variance of 18 feet 6 inches is necessary for side yard setback of the storage unit. C, accessory structures general, Section 220-18 Accessory Structures A, General 2, states, except as otherwise specified in this chapter, accessory structures are not permitted in the front yard of any lot. The site plan drawn indicates 3410 State Street fronts both State Street and Albany Streets. Therefore, a variance is needed to allow an accessory structure in the front yard to Albany Street. 14 notices were mailed out. We received one response, a county referral, and a planning board recommendation.
The the responses from Earl and Cindy Rao, they write, to whom it may concern, upon receiving the letter from the zoning board, I'm very disappointed that Craig is being put through this. I live directly across the street at 3416 Albany Street and I have known Craig ever since he's owned the building. I can honestly say that Craig is not only a businessman, but also a part of our neighborhood. He's the kind of guy who takes the time to wave whenever we see him or even check in with us. Craig has always taken great care of his property and we have never had an issue with any of his customers. The boulder that prevents cars from Albany Street entering his property has been one of the best choices made. We have lived here over 30 years and heads and have seen multiple cars speeding through the parking lot or witnessed cars pulling in to sell drugs. We appreciate the boulders and would not feel safe without them as they help our neighborhood safety. I'm also disturbed that the storage unit would be an issue. Like I stated before, we live directly across and find the storage unit not an eyesore or a problem. I have personally seen Craig use the storage unit almost daily, so I know that he's not just parking it in there to cause any problems. The storage unit is not in rough shape and in my opinion, it is a good color. I'm not too sure how helpful this email will be, but I hope this helps a small business owner who is part of our neighborhood. Thank you, Earl and Cindy. The county referral deferred to local consideration and the planning board recommendation states the effect on the comprehensive plan is the planning board unanimously agreed that a temporary accessory structure had no effect on the comprehensive plan as long as it was temporary and complied with the processes described in the recommendation below. For suitability of use, the planning board unanimously agreed that a temporary accessory structure is not suitable for the site. It is large in size, is within view of neighboring properties. It is self-created situation and includes a large setback variance request and a multitude of alternative solutions exist. Alternative solutions include dropping the automated automotive use to minimize the variance smaller or multiple storage unit locations or an addition to the building. The recommendation from the planning board is the board unanimously recommends allowing the pod as a temporary accessory structure with the area variance described above. The board agreed that the establish establishment of two six-month milestones must be met. Failure to comply with these milestones will result in a building inspector issuing a noncompliance letter to the property owner, thereby initiating the existing code violation process. The first milestone requires that a site application for site plan approval shall be submitted to the planning department no more than six months from the date of the ZBA action. The site plan may require the applicant to return to the ZBA for variances to affect site plan approval. The second milestone requires that engineering and site plan approval shall be completed no more than 12 months from the date of any ZBA action. The board also agreed that conditions and or milestones will be utilized in the planning board resolution for site plan approval to establish, monitor, and drive the site modification schedule. The pod would be allowed on the property until the site plan's specifics approved by resolution, possibly with conditions, milestones, are completed.
Okay, I would ask if the applicant could please come forward, state your name and address, summarize your application, and what efforts were made by you to mitigate the need of a variance or the size of the variance?
Hi, my name's Craig Sarafini, 3410 State Street. Well, unfortunately, there is nothing that I can do to eliminate the need for a variance due to the unusual nature of the property being sandwiched between State and Albany Streets. In regards to, you know, minimizing the the variance options, obviously, I I would have looked at location of the pod unit, things along those lines. Unfortunately, considering the way the property has been used when people who aren't supposed to be there are there, we chose to locate it where we did. What I mean by that is previously, we we used a couple of vehicles that we had, like a box truck and a trailer to use for our storage. Unfortunately, we were finding that a lot of people that were using the bus stop, which is located in front of our property, were going over there and either relieving themselves or doing drugs. And so what we did is we decided to get those units out, clean it up as best we could, go to one solid unit, and we located that at the far side of the property but inside of our fence line, so that way we could get good lights on it and also cameras to try and control who is there and how we kept an eye on those things. Temporary, we're actually in need of storage for our business. And as we are looking at the potential of putting an addition on the building that would allow us to incorporate everything under one solid roof, the pod unit kind of took over for the other storage that we were using in the meantime.
And how long do you envision needing the pod there?
As outlined by the planning board, we're hoping that within a year, we can take everything from concept to actual construction. At that point, the pod unit would no longer be used as what I'll call general storage. It would just be used as construction storage until the construction was completed. But in the meantime, we're looking for that six-month and then additional six-month period so that we can get to that construction phase.
I would ask, can we do two six months at one time, or would it need to come back at some point? Is Ms. Kim still with us?
Yeah, sorry. You just got off for a second. Can you repeat that question?
Okay. He's looking for two, he's looking for two six-month periods. Can that be done now, or does the second one need to be done closer to the commencement of it?
Laura, I think you can speak to that. I mean, I think that they can be done both now because they don't expire within that time period. Laura, I'll defer to you.
Yeah, I think we can do two. I'm comfortable doing two with the kind of the expiration dates on both of them written into the resolution, into the variance approval, if that would be important.
Are there questions from the board members?
Yeah, Mr. Sarafini, this is Keith Frary. What is the project that's anticipated?
We are, right now, we're working feasibility on putting an addition on the building, which, at the end of the day, again, due to the location of the property, I will be needing assistance from the zoning board to be able to get approvals on that. Just because of the setbacks between the two streets are basically unworkable in today's environment. But it is so that we can feasibly, hopefully, put an addition on the building.
And what is in the building right now?
In the building itself?
Yes.
We have a retail store in the building.
Okay. What's the, I'm trying to look, I'm looking at it online, and I'm just trying to make sure I'm in the right spot. What's the?
Oh, okay. I apologize. My business is Upstate Guns and Ammo.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I think, is it the blue building that's there?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So it looks like you're, share a parking lot or at least next door to Mavis? Is that right?
We are next door to them. We do not share space with them.
The parking lot that's there, is that Mavis's lot?
No, that is all part of my property.
Okay. All right. So as I'm looking, as I'm facing the front of your building, the pod would be on the Albany Street side away from Mavis?
Correct. It would be, it follows the, basically the footprint of my building. If you were going up and down State Street, and it is all the way at the back of the property. So it's as close to Albany Street as inside of our property. If you, what the picture just showed up there, you can actually see where the cursor is, that that's showing. Yes.
And the folks, the people that wrote the letter live across Albany Street from your property?
Correct. If you look just to the left where that large tree is, there is right there.
Okay. Just out of curiosity, the Tan's building next door, was that where a coffee shop was or something like that?
Correct. That's Graham's Coffee Parlor.
Because we approved, Laura, I think we approved a variance for that not long ago, so. Oh, I would say that, you know, between the coffee parlor and and your building, you've cleaned up at least a portion of this area. There is still, it looks like that lot on the other side of the coffee parlor could use some some TLC, but
A lot of TLC.
Yeah. The rest of it, the rest of it looks, looks good. So that's that's the only question I had was, was actually where in relation to the building. Thank you.
Mr. Sarafini, this is John Hope. Can you put that picture up again? If you pan over to the left, the, what appears to be a box truck in the camp, the the RV, is that on, is that on your property as well?
Correct. The RV is actually no longer there. That's one of the vehicles or items that we had for sale. The box truck itself was previously used for storage, and when we got our notification that we had to go through the process for, you know, all these different variances and whatnot, instead of literally scrapping the box truck as I had originally planned, I held it back in case I had to move storage into that again.
But you're not currently using that for storage, correct?
Correct.
And is the addition, the addition you're planning, just out of curiosity, is that going behind the building then? Where the pod would be?
That's what my engineer thinks the best thing would be. Obviously, we're open to different interpretations or ideas, but right now with the initial work that we've kind of laid out and what we've looked at, it's our best thought is just to follow the whiff of the building and just go backwards.
So at least in terms of the aesthetics, what would be a a pod now would be a building later, hopefully?
Correct. And generally speaking, we would, you know, end the building at one point, you know, obviously, and put some landscape in there, so once we're done, it would soften even the building.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Other questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Sarafini, this is Katrina Pacheco. I noticed in the letter from the planning board, there was some mention of automotive use. Is that a current designation of the property?
Correct. Right now, I have, I guess it's called the dual use, which allows for the automotive sales and the retail sales.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Mr. Sarafini, this is Richard Green. I am appreciative of the words from one of the neighbors across the street. My memory is when I did a site visit there, that there were two, at least two other residential buildings across the street.
Yes, that's correct.
I'm just curious, did you have an opportunity to speak with the owners or occupants of the other approximately two other units across the street?
The one owner, she is now disabled, so I haven't been able to see her. The other, they're a renter, and I did speak to them. They're actually one of my customers. And of course, you know, with that relationship, they didn't have any objections to anything I was looking at.
So if the if this board is inclined to grant requests for the variances, it would be for a limited period of time, correct?
Correct. Basically, the hope is that the board would see fit to grant me enough time so that I could bring a addition to life through the engineering and through whatever approvals are necessary through the boards.
Yeah, if you had an opportunity with an architect or an other appropriate professional to move that process forward?
I've got my engineer who's started doing it, but until we, you know, were sure that we even had time to work on it, we didn't want to put too much money into a project that maybe, you know, could have been dead on arrival.
Yeah. What type of timeframe might you be anticipating to move that portion of the project forward?
I would very much like to have construction going next year. So
What time next year? Early next year in the spring?
It's hard to say.
Other timeframe?
I am guessing somewhere between spring and summer, because if we're going to get into construction, fall is my busiest season typically, and we would want to, you know, be able to do it in a way that allowed us to be done before that.
Have you had any trouble with persons who might be deemed undesirable since you've placed the large bin?
Not touching, affecting the bin, nothing like that. We unfortunately have that bus stop in front of us, which, and I hate to use that as a litmus test, if you will, but it does tend to draw in a lot of people who maybe should not be in our area.
You have a security camera that you're using, did I hear?
We have multiple layers of security.
Yep, and is it directed toward the area of the bin, which is the perhaps present and certainly former area of arguably inappropriate activity?
Yeah, specifically with that, part of the reason why we cleaned it out and we left that area there was so that we could keep that covered by lighting and cameras.
Yeah. When you see something that's out of line, if you had an opportunity up to this point to report the activity to the Niskuna Police?
Yeah, we actually have a very close relationship with many of the officers, both as customers and in a professional capacity, and you know, so we do have them who we contact to report things, and they also are proactive in parking our lot when they have opportunity, doing their paperwork. It's been a really good collaboration, I think, with them.
Do you find that you've had less arguably inappropriate activity with the big bin that's out there now as opposed to the former configuration with smaller units and such?
I haven't found a single needle in my parking lot since we went to the bin, which is a massive improvement.
All right, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Latif got a couple of questions here. Just to confirm here that I understand what's going on, so your placement of the portable storage unit to replace the cargo in the trailer, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and your new storage unit is going to be eight by 60? The size of it?
Hold on, I'm just trying to look at the it's actually, it's 40 foot long by eight foot wide.
Okay, eight by 44.
Forty, 40 foot by eight foot.
Okay, cool. Okay, because I see some proposal that said eight by 60, that's why I was asking.
Yeah, six, I'm not sure where that number would have come from, but 60 would have been, I think, a size that they don't even make, but it would have been longer than our building.
That's, that's why I was concerned, because 60 is way long for that property there. Now, you mentioned you're going to run electric to that portable?
That's correct.
Okay, and electric is, what's the reason that you will have electric in there?
Well, with anything that size, regardless of how bright it is during the day, it's a solid unit, so lighting for one, but by having power in there, it allows us to kind of maintain the temperatures and humidity levels. And additionally, you know, any other electronics that we have in the unit have the ability to run off those electronics.
Okay, so, so my concern is it is going to be used as storage, not anything else? And electricity is to maintain the temperature in that storage?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you. I don't have anything else. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? Are there any questions from members of the public? Hearing done, I would ask if any board member wishes to make a motion, and I would ask that any motion covers both six-month periods.
Mr. Chairman, this is Keith Frary. I'm going to move that we approve the variance as requested. I would applaud the applicant for his efforts to attempt to eventually clean up the neighborhood. This is a difficult area, given the location, a number of different places connected to being one of them. And I think that through the efforts of not only the applicant, but also neighboring businesses, they've, they've done a fairly decent job in trying to clean up the neighborhood. So I don't think it's going to have an adverse effect. In fact, I think it's had and will continue to have a positive effect on the neighborhood. I don't believe there's any, any environmental impact, particularly if this project is able to, to come to fruition. There's some discussions of green space and whatnot, which I think was one of the issues that we dealt with, with the neighboring coffee shop. I don't necessarily know if the issue of being substantial applies because this is a temporary request. Hopefully, the applicant is able to achieve his construction goals and get a more permanent expansion and extension of the current building. I think that probably there's, there's no other way to achieve this. Again, because it is temporary, I think that's a fairly minor issue. So for those reasons, I move that we approve the requested variance.
Before I go, just for a point of clarification, the, there's the request for setbacks as well as for the six-month periods for the structure. Are you including the setbacks in your motion?
Correct. My motion would cover the setbacks and for six-month periods.
And the set, and does your motion include that the setbacks are limited to the time that the storage unit is, the storage bin is there?
Correct. For the time of the storage unit, obviously, if there's issues that deal with the setback for new construction, we'll deal with that when it arises, but this is just setbacks as it pertains to the temporary storage structures.
Thank you. There's been a motion made. Is there a second for the motion?
I second the motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing done, I would ask if we could please call the roll?
Mr. Frary?
Yes.
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Ms. McGinnis?
Yes, for the reason stated.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes, with the proviso that I do believe the request is substantial, but is referenced by Mr. Frary and perhaps others. The tempor, it kind of mitigates against that, so the fact that it's a big bin, yes, that's true. However, given the fact that this is limited in time and given the representations with regards to anticipated plans going forward, I vote yes.
Mr. Hope?
Yes, for the reason stated.
Chairman Goodman?
I will vote yes for the reason stated, including the fact that this is a temporary means until there can be construction. Certainly, your variances have been granted, they are temporary, and I want to thank you for your time this evening as well as the extra time during my technical difficulties with the internet.
Thank you. I want to say thank you to everybody, and I look forward to seeing you again for some variances so we can get construction moving.
Thank you for your time.
You got it. Have a great evening.
Any other matters to come before the zoning board this evening?
But do we just want to quickly talk about the potential for an in-person meeting in October?
Yes.
So Alexis, I don't know if you're still on the line. Alexis is the one, yeah, are you?
Yep, so Supervisor Syed had previously sent out a memo saying all meetings will be held remotely until further notice. My understanding is that she'll be issuing a similar memo saying that starting October 1st, all meetings may resume in person, and that memo will outline some of the requirements regarding maximum occupancy and having a backup plan for if there is a need for an applicant to appear remotely who does not feel comfortable appearing in person. And we have the technology in place. The only proviso, I will say, is that we don't have a screen so that you want to be able to see somebody participating remotely. We would only be able to hear them via audio.
Okay. My concern would be, we have a larger board than some of the other boards, and would we have tables going out to the wings, what I'll call the wings, so the people can be further apart, or will there be plexiglass?
Yeah, so we ordered, so in addition to ordering, so each person on the board will have their own microphone, so you don't have to worry about sharing them, but we ordered basically, imagine a three-sided plexiglass shields that will go around you, so even though Imagine a three-sided plexiglass, uh, shields that will go around you. So even though you might be within six feet of one another. You'll have plexiglass, uh, both in front and to your sides. Uh, and so, um, yeah, I mean, that, that all the, you could. That would mitigate against the need to even to perhaps wear a mask also. Um, and we're going to have, you know, ventilation. Hopefully we'll have the back two doors propped open. Um, it will just be a matter of having somebody staffed at the, additional staff, um. To check people in and have, you know, the contact tracing protocol in place.
And take everyone's temperatures?
Yes, we have a wall-mounted tan-free thermometer that's at the front of the town hall. Um, and the only thing that we might, we need to schedule is sometimes, I, I mean, Laura, I remember there were some instances where I had court the same night as zoning board. It, is that still the case? Because that, that is, uh, potentially, you know. Something we want to take into consideration.
Yes, that typically happens every zoning board meeting because court is every Wednesday.
Yes.
Okay, so perhaps we can have a sec, I'll, I'll look into maybe a second, a different entrance or exit, but I mean, that will have to just be logistics.
If court doesn't have a whole lot of cases, sometimes it's done before the zoning board starts, but I don't really understand how that works.
But sometimes people are in the hallways because the courtroom is so full. Okay.
Or in some cases, if you guys remember, the court people come over into the zoning board occasionally. If anybody.
We don't put them in jail.
I'm pretty sure the police body slam that one guy.
I think one thing that will just be important is, um, I know this is, it's gotten better the past couple of months, but having a clear idea, you know, a day or two in advance of who exactly is going to be appearing. On, you know, on the zoning board if we're going, if it's going to be alternate, alternates, what have you, because we'll send out like the COVID daily health screening the day of the meeting. Um, so I want to make sure everybody who is on the board is receiving that.
Yep, just a heads up, uh, I don't know that I'm particularly interested in sitting within six feet of anybody. Uh, unmasked and the spit shield's nice, but it doesn't cut it for me. So I'm just giving you a heads up. Like, we may have a further discussion that we don't necessarily need to have at this moment, but I'm alerting you. That sitting within six feet of somebody or, uh, sitting in place, uh, with, uh, having a spit shield doesn't work for me. So just heads up.
Yes, um, and anybody, everyone could, I'm the COVID nineteen. Point of contact designated by the town board. So if anybody has any like personal questions that they don't want to discuss on an open meeting. They can feel free to send them to me and I'll keep them confidential, especially anybody who identifies as a higher risk or a vulnerable population. That's something that the town is cognizant of and, um. And, and, and that we should be, that I should be aware of so that in making these logistical, logistics and operational plans, um, I have that in mind so as not to exclude anybody.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Any other matters?
Nope.
Okay, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion is made. Second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We stand adjourned. I want to thank everyone for your time this evening. And we'll see you next month. And I apologize for my technical difficulties on this end.